Good evening, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. We want to begin with the clerk calling the roll, or announcing the meeting and calling the roll.
Roll call. Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
McKernan?
Here.
Muggia?
Here.
Maddox?
Here.
Kane?
This evening, the invocation is being given by Reverend Mike May of St. Lutheran Church. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, our hearts are full of thanks this night. We are thankful especially that you have given us this world that is at this particular time in our territory, quite beautiful. We give you thanks for the timely rains that we have experienced again in our locale. We give you thanks for this beautiful municipality you blessed us with, and above all, we give you thanks for the leaders who are stewards of it. It is a gift that has been passed down to us, and we pray that we may be faithful stewards and managers of that. Help us always to be directed by the economy of your generosity at a time when we are talking about budgets and we are prone to worry about there never being enough. Grant that we may be cheered by the generosity of your love to know that when we first bring ourselves, our own will and our own desires to your feet, that we do find ways to deal justly and generously with one another. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you Reverend May for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Ms. Cobins, are there any revisions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there are revisions, Mr. Mayor. A blue sheet has been distributed. Under consent agenda, we have two new items. Item number nine is an ordinance and a resolution for GL refunding bonds, Series 2014-D. This item was presented on July 7th at the Economic Development and Finance Standing Committee, and it has received a unanimous vote, and is requested for your approval of the mayor to fast-track it to the agenda tonight. The second item is item number 10. It's an amendment to the reappointment of the boards and commission. It's requesting their approval to amend the change in effective date from 8/114-73117 to 7/1014 through 7/3117, and that's for Mr. Lynn Kaluva at the Schmidt.
All right, and is it my understanding that both of these are included on the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay, so these are on your consent agenda. Is there any person in attendance or any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda tonight? If so, will you please step forward to the microphone and indicate.
Move for approval for all items?
Second. Let the record show, there's no one moving to remove any items. It is properly moved and seconded. Roll call.
Roll call. Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Muggia?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero, that motion carries.
That brings us to the last item on our agenda. It is a travel request from Commissioner Maddox.
Move for approval?
It has been moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Roll call. Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Muggia?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero, that motion carries.
All right, that brings to a conclusion tonight's agenda. That was even faster than we thought in terms of the agenda we had left room should an item be pulled off the --
That's the record. That would be the record, I believe.
That's not bad.[410.12][410.12](Laughter) The dilemma is, we have, we were going to begin our budget workshop discussion now, originally slated for 7:30. We either take a 25-minute recess or we encompass it under announcements. Do people have their budget workshop books with them? You need to go back up. We'll go ahead and take our recess and come back at 7:30 as posted. Do we need them? Or are we going to do an overview?
I would say the items we're doing tonight would not require us to, you would have, you would not have to have your book with you.
All right, let's go ahead with, let's go ahead and we'll do this under the form of announcements. There's not a lot, we're not going to be taking action at this meeting, we're just going to be presenting, so we can begin the discussion now.
Okay, Mayor, if I may?
Please.
And I'll ask the budget staff, you'll move up in front of the microphones in case there's questions directed to Mr. Levin and his staff. Tonight, Ms. Levin is passing out a document for you, and we'll put it on screen as well. Two topics really for discussion tonight. One was in reference to the maximum mill levy which we'll be considering on Monday night, and then the other is just a discussion of topics for budget workshops. I'll take the lead on the initial one with the discussion regarding the maximum mill levy. Emphasis here is, as you'll recall in previous years from doing this, when we take our action on Monday, you have to set what would be the maximum mill levy. You have clearly the right within, to lower the mill levy to any point under that, but once you adopt it, then we go to publication, there's timeframes required for how long it's published and listed out there, so you can't, if you decide later during the process that you wanted the mill levy to be a quarter of a mill higher than what you had considered, we would have to start the process back over. So, that's what, that's what the step is on Monday, and I just wanted to remind you of that as you're thinking about it going forward. And I think in relation to that, I have put forth a budget which maintains the mill rate at its current level. Now, that takes a step where it increases the county mill rate, but then decreases the city mill rate. And it's just, the point of thought from your standpoint is if there's anything else you may come up with that you want to do within the budget that you don't want to reduce things for, you might want to think about it in terms of whether you want to publish the city mill rate at a lower mill rate or leave it up at the rate it is currently, or the other. So it's kind of the evaluation from that standpoint, and I will stress, and we have it out there for discussion on Monday night, to talk about the fund balance, bond rating, those factors, and what you may want to do when you work through this budget, whether you determine or not you want to leave it at a, at a higher rate. So I guess, I am recommending to you that you leave the mill rate there, probably at the rate at which we have it for the city today, and that's what you publish, even though my budget recommends this is where it can be, and this is how we can build a budget to be at our current level. But I'm recommending you think about it as you go through the budget over the weekend, about how maybe you, you might not want to necessarily publish that rate, so you have some flexibility in working with it over the coming weeks.
You might remember last year, we did publish a higher mill rate than we ultimately adopted. That is not terribly uncommon. It's much easier from a publishing perspective and the legal requirements of notifying the public to bring the mill rate down than it is to move it up, and so that's the consideration. It's, it would, I think the precedent is, we often set the maximum mill levy higher than we intend to set it ultimately while we go through the discussion. And if you look at the items that we're going to be discussing, our, our fund balance and bond rating is going to be a discussion that we're going to have on Monday from Mr. Levin, and looking at some of the other items down below that people want to consider funding, this budget does not, does not include funding for increased employee compensation, nor does it include funding for some other items. So, it's a, it's a bare bones budget, and ultimately, the policy decision we need to make is where do we set that mill levy at the end of the day after we discuss all of the items that have been set out before us. So, the recommendation from Mr. Bach is to set the maximum mill levy for the county two mills higher than it is in anticipation of that, and setting the city mill levy at the same rate it currently is, which would show a net increase of two mills, even though the administrator's budget does not recommend that ultimately. So, that's the recommendation. We have time to think about that over the weekend. One of the things though, is because of the time crunch, on Monday, we have to vote to set the maximum mill levy to stay on schedule for the state publication requirements, but I didn't want to have that conversation once without people recognizing what's involved and having time to think about it. So, that's the, that's the item out there now. Commissioner Walker.
Mayor, or maybe it's Mr. Bach, what is the actual drop dead date for publishing or adopting the budget? I mean, we've got it scheduled to try to do it by the end of July, but is it not early in August sometime?
It is, it is later. I would ask Mr. Levin or Debbie if you could tell, I mean, it's, when is the date in August that it has to be?
We, we have to certify it to the clerk's office by August 25th.
All right, and then there's a follow-up question. Is this date, is Monday the drop dead date for the maximum mill levy adoption?
It is the drop dead date for us to meet the schedule of adopting a budget by the end of August, or the end, end of July.
Well, so, this is your proposed schedule, and we can, we can change that.
Yes, you can.
So, we, we don't have to be, it seems to me we're, we're being rushed into this thing on Monday, perhaps without, I don't even know, we have here later to get to other topics from commissioners. I already know there's other topics that commissioners want to talk about. I understand the implications of raising ta, you know, raising taxes, but do we want to lock ourselves into, you know, the proposal of, and therefore then preclude any consideration of any of these other topics that are going to be done? I mean, I, I don't think giving us till Monday is, is enough time to set the maximum mill levy, quite candidly. I mean, I'll do whatever the rest of you want, but that's my opinion.
Well, I would say in the seven years, eight, this is my eighth budget, we've always managed to do it, and we've always been thoughtful about the maximum mill levy to give consideration for other items. And so, we have that opportunity to estimate what the cost of other items would be and how far we'd be willing to raise taxes if we wanted to do all of them, and we set that maximum mill levy at that point, and then we can always move it down. That's the key, is we can always move it down. And so, we're not tying our hands in terms of consideration, but setting that maximum mill levy is something that's been successful in the past, and I would say, our staff needs time, certifying it to the state takes time. Adopting it at the end of July has been a practice for decades that has worked well for us, and so I, I feel like we need to stick with that schedule. But I think, I think we can do, Commissioner, all due consideration for the items you want under the maximum mill levy that we set on Monday. So, one of the things we might jump to is what other items you want to make sure we talk about, so we have that proper list before us, and we're considering that when we go into the discussion. Commissioner Philbrook?
Yes, my question is around the same thing that Hal brought up. If, if we were to adopt all of these, what kind of money are we talking about? I'm just trying to put in, you know, when we talk about maximum mill levy. Now, I'm not saying we would do it, I'm just saying if we chose to do a lot of these things, topics for future budget work sessions, if we chose to fund a lot of that, what would that dollar amount be? Do you know?
Well, I don't know that all the topics necessarily have a dollar figure attached to them, or at least a dollar figure that I would, I would know. I mean, with the fair, I think we do know what their request is. CDVG is discussion based on the funds that are in that area, so it's not a different one. You know, the fund balance, bond rating, I mean, that's a number as big as you want it to be, probably, so I mean, you could, you know, we have a 10% is what our target is, so that would be a little higher than I'm sure you would want to even consider.
That's more than two mill.
But if you were to want to draw, yeah.
That'd be 13 mil.
That's what I'm saying. You know, it's like, yeah.
You know, so those, those are different types of discussions to say, to fund them all, it's whether you'd want to drop more money to the bottom line. The transfers, you know, that's a discussion. I don't think there was ever intention that we were going to try to fund all that back in this coming year. And the others are, you know, I'm not sure with the chief judge, I did meet with him yesterday, had a discussion, but he did not leave me with a specific item, but he may come over and talk about some things. They, they typically bring up requests about improvements to be made to the courthouse and some of the aging infrastructure and problems that we have, so it could be in that regard, it could be something in his operations. So I guess as I run through the list, I don't really have a number attached to each one of these, it's probably what, what could be a, a practical one probably from that standpoint.
So, so my question is really based around the same thing as Hal's thinking, it's like, so how much money are we willing to, you know, put out there? How, and the maximum, if we do two mill and even leave that in there, you know, end up raising two mill, you know? How much, how much of that is it really going to help, this big, like, long list? That's the question. And, you know, because if we lock ourselves in and say, well, two mill, then that's what it'll be, unless we want to come back and start over again. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct. You couldn't go higher than that.
Right, right. Hal, are you think, Hal, are you thinking about spending more than two mill?
You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just kind of trying to understand. I'm not thinking about really spending anything other than not locking myself into a mill levy that makes it impossible for us to, I mean, if we're going to set the mill levy at what we, at what's sitting up here right now, under what was proposed, I don't see much point in talking about any of this stuff. Let's just move on and get it done, because there's going to be no, no money or no wiggle room unless we cut expenditures in certain areas and can rely upon a cut of expenditures. And frankly, Mayor, I'm going to, I mean this respectfully, I've been here a lot of years myself, and I've seen budgets adopted in August, so the fact that it might have worked well the last six or seven years is not the big perspective. I mean, if we need more time, we need more time. This is the most important function and the only function that the commission does that has any real power. So, I don't want to be rushed into making decisions on any of this stuff, and if it, if it takes an extra three days to establish a maximum mill levy or a week, I don't quite understand what the big deal is.
All right, so that will be fodder for conversation on Monday, about whether or not we want to go ahead and vote, or whether or not we want to postpone it. All right. Topic for future budget work sessions. What's that? Mr. Levin?
Wanted to add for clarification, the, the action you will be taking is not only setting the maximum mill levy, but the maximum level of expenditures. It's a, I'll say it's a two-pronged test. If you have time on your budget document, if you look at page and it's numbered preface 40, 41, and 42, it has an example of, of the action that you'll be taking whenever you decide to set both the maximum level of expenditures and the maximum mill levy. In addition to the city and county budget, you'll also be setting that, the same parameters for this downtown Schmidt budget.
Thank you. All right. Any, the topics that I've heard from the commission that you want to discuss during the budget, we have the fair, CDVG, non-commission elected official requests, chief judge request, public safety suggestions, and then suggestions from you all. Are there, and this is not a close, we don't have to decide this today, but if you know today of topics that you want to make sure we have a workshop session on, we can add that to the list, and as we go through the budget, as often happens, people think of other things that they want to add to the list, and we add those as well. So is there anything today that you know that's not on this list that you want to make sure we have a workshop session on? Commissioner Kane?
I don't have anything I want to add. What is a non-commission elected official request?
That's a, might not have had a good word, but that's, yeah, our, like our chief judge would be one of those, the register of deeds, the sheriff, the DA. So it's the other elected officials that, as they oversee departments, are given their budget for the first time today, and they may want to come back and offer a difference of opinion to what I, as the county administrator, put forth in recommendation for their budget. I went over and met with them yesterday, talked about the budget a little bit and where things were going, and told them that I would put that out here, and I see, I believe, prior to this meeting, the chief judge did come back and make a request that he did get, would get a time. I don't know that the others would, particularly if we do a public safety session, typically the sheriff appears at that one with the police and fire if we elect to do so.
Okay, are there any other topics that you're aware of?
Additional public transportation.
Public transportation? Okay. We will add public transportation. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, having a bit of trouble there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After I go through the book, the book this weekend, I don't know if this is actually for spending, but the administrator alluded to this earlier today, the issue about our parks and making sure they're adequately groomed. I don't know if that is an issue of contracts or what the issue is, but just to have that addressed. It may not be any money, it may be allocation of other resources, but this might be a good time, so if money is involved, that would be it. And I thought the presentation by the administrator and the staff of the budget this afternoon early was, was wonderful, I really did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll add parks and mowing. Mowing, by the way, is a popular annual topic for the budget. All right, anything else? All right, you see before you the schedule that we have laid out, you've seen the schedule before, just to reiterate, we have, our next several workshop sessions will be on the fifth floor, which is much more conducive to conversation in terms of being at tables around, so we won't be in the commission chambers. The public are invited to those meetings, there's a, it's a much better setup for the public in terms of observing the meetings, and they will be fully televised, so people at home are, are able to watch or watch them after the fact on the internet. So, we have all of these set out, it is every Thursday and Monday working through. There's a lot of time in there to work through a lot of topics, so we want to make sure we don't sort change anything, and we want to make sure we take the time necessary to discuss everything at length. Commissioner Townsend?
One other question, Mr. Mayor. With these budget work session topics, have particular dates been allocated for these discussions so persons who may be interested only in one or two, and who may want an intended person will know when to come?
Yes, I think we can ask the administrator and his staff to identify dates for these and put the calendar out, so we'll know what topics will be discussed when.
Thank you.
That's, that's a good idea.
We'll have a recommended calendar for that on these topics on Monday.
All right. All right, that was our initial goal, was to walk through the calendar, walk through the items, and get ready for the, the work ahead. I hope the commissioners will take time to, this weekend, to read the executive summary and to leaf through the budget as promised in years past. The budget basically is the same budget we see every year, and so what we're going to be discussing are the changes, and while, and we have spent a lot of time this year working on it, and I commend the commission for doing that, I think we, I think we have our work cut out for us moving forward, but I'm looking forward to getting into it and working through this together. So if there's no further questions or comments from the commission, we are adjourned. are able to watch or watch them after the fact on the internet. So, we have all of these set out. It is every Thursday and Monday working through. There's a lot of time in there to work through a lot of topics. So, we wanna make sure we don't sort change anything, and we wanna make sure we take the time necessary to discuss everything at length. Commissioner Townsend?
One other question, Mr. Mayor. With these budget work session topics, have particular dates been allocated for these discussions so persons who may be interested only in one or two, and who may want an intended person, will know when to come?
Yes, I think we can ask the administrator and his staff to identify dates for these and put the calendar out so we'll know what topics will be discussed when.
Thank you.
That's, that's a good idea.
We'll have a recommended calendar for that on these topics on Monday.
Alright. Alright, that was our initial goal, was to walk through the calendar, walk through the items, and get ready for the work ahead. I hope the Commissioners will take time to, this weekend, to read the executive summary and to leaf through the budget as promised in years past. The budget basically is the same budget we see every year. And so, what we're gonna be discussing are the changes. And while, and we have spent a lot of time this year working on it, and I commend the Commission for doing that. I think we, I think we have our work cut out for us moving forward, but I'm looking forward to getting into it and working through this together. So, if there's no further questions or comments from the Commission, we are adjourned.
It is one where, as illustrated by this, it is, dollars are still tight. So, it's, when we're, would like to be able to sit here and present something where we have a few more dollars in the equation, but this is how we'll move through from here. I really wanna start tonight by noting all the work that this governing body has done and the leadership you put into this when I date back to last fall, when you started your strategic planning and working on this budget, given the guidance to say, let's move forward and let's get a public hearing done in February. And as you recall, that was a public hearing where we had the residents come in, presented $6.2 million worth of ideas as to what they thought could be added to the budget. And give you a time to at least hear those items as we were working through the budget. You could look at them, spend some time working through it. It's difficult to build those kinda items into a budget, but if you get them in the last minute or right as we're preparing final budgets, you don't even have time to consider them. But then, as we moved on to March 8th, which I will recall is a very noteworthy day for myself, as you all cast a vote to put me in this seat. You know, then I gotta spend the next five or six hours with you as you plan your budget moving forward. So, but those sessions worked out very well. You spent a lot of time, you worked through the projects budget, spent a lot, three different meetings on community development in addition to the presentation. So, a lot of times it was invested at this body. It gave myself and staff a lot of guidance as we were able to work forward from this point. Your strategic planning that you came out of this, had a lot of, a lot of good ideas and goals we're working forward. The first one being property tax reductions, restoring fund balance, reducing debt, and the list goes down about many different items. And one of those points that we noted as we went through that process, that based on our current fiscal situation, the first item is really in conflict with everything else on the list. So, it was one where we had to refine that strategy, and that in turn really came down to a structural balance that the governing body was looking for. What can we do to structurally balance our upcoming budget year? And doing so, keeping the main goal, how do you maintain the property tax levy at its current rate? Now, you, you gave me some guiding principles within that. Keep the CNEP project in place. This was something we did from our dedicated sales tax fund, where a portion of money went to police and fire, but the money was there for infrastructure, and you wanted to emphasize that we keep the CNEP in place, which has been successful into some of the programs that you all have done over the past couple of years in the first part of this. Get an employee compensation study done, work on the third-party study of public safety operations, and do so in a fashion that puts us in a position where we think we can maintain our bond rating. So, what's our financial landscape look like? In over 2014, it has been a difficult budget year as we, as we look at things. Revenues have continued to lag, you know, new housing remains sluggish. We are seeing some new things come on, and it's a little bit better now. But remember, our budget year is always, looks at what our previous year was when we look at tax dollars. Commercial and residential property values have not rebounded from where they were in 2008, and I can graphically show this in a little bit. We still have assessed, the little assessed valuation we've received has been offset by the machinery and equipment legislation from years previously. The business activity is better, but it's still slow. And then, we've had some additional impacts from our state legislature. So, that's really been big impacts on our landscape this year. And challenges in 2015 is we have the healthcare cost. New one in that mix is the Affordable Healthcare Act, which is a mandate that as an employer, we're now paying $150,000 a year into this program. I do hope that we will see some benefits maybe from some of our guests that stay across the street, and that it'll help them from where their insurance could be in place. But we haven't seen anything from that. But as a large employer, we have to pay for this every year as part of the program. EPA mandates, ADA mandates, these are things that affect us from both our water pollution area and our Board of Public Utilities. So, large costs that come into our operation that we continue to work with throughout the community. Additional challenges from that landscape in 2015, and we're there in 14, continue again with machinery and equipment, the mortgage registration fee, which changed from a state policy this year that said that any business, commercial, single-family residents, when they do their mortgage, they had to pay as a fee previously. A lot of our larger businesses that came into the community, be it the industrial, commercial, paid rather large ones, now they don't have to pay this fee. So, that's a very big tax break that they are receiving due to this new state legislation. It's an impact on us. Delinquent tax interest was changed, the conceal and open carry. It's a training impact that's affecting our staff today. If we continue to operate our, all of our buildings as we do today in the future, this will be a cost item for us. And then, our capers and KPNF retirement plan costs just continue to move each year to keep those successful. Kinda the cause and effect on a couple of these, just to illustrate them. The machinery and equipment, cause it was passed in 2006, and a lot of time people say, well, how do you keep referring to that as something that's a big negative on your budget? Well, it's really the gift that just keeps giving, or taking, I guess, from that perspective. Because it came in and said, any new machinery and equipment bought after 2006 would no longer pay taxes. It's a great economic development tool for us. Has worked fantastic for us when we go out and work on bringing new businesses, new industry and manufacturing into our community. The unfortunate side of that is, we were over $200 million in valuation when this started. Now, we're down to around 70. That's an annual impact on our budget, and that's the unified government's budget, not our total tax dollars that pays the other taxing entity of $10 million annually that we receive from this fund. And as I said, this is the gift that keeps giving. We'll probably be at about a $14 million annual loss before this is done. So, we've got a couple more years where we'll see negative impacts from the machinery and equipment hitting our budget, and then we, it goes on forever, cause we'll never get that money back. But it is an annual impact that we're not receiving anymore. And, and it really shows when we see an increase in just our residential value or our real estate value. So, we see that go up a little bit, but we lose it a little bit here. So, you gotta, we gotta gain 20 in order just to be equal each year the way this is working. The mortgage revenue fee that I mentioned, next year, the impact of that'll be a half million dollars, and that'll keep ramping up to 1.8 million again annually. Not a one-time thing. This is something we've lost forever that'll just continue to go away. It's a tax break for the larger businesses are really the ones that see the impact of that when they have the mortgages come in, and some on the new homes and such like that. But it's a direct loss negative in our, our budget, particularly the county budget is where this goes, and their budget is really relying upon property tax. Well, I guess that's the end. Delinquent tax, many of you might not have seen much about this, and it's an area that we've done a lot of work, and this Commission has done a lot of work, to work toward increasing the amount of properties that are, decreasing the number of properties that are in, paying delinquent tax, get them in, take it out. Well, legislation passed this year, lower the interest rate if you are delinquent on your taxes. So, two different categories. If you're below 10,000 delinquent, it dropped the interest rate from 6% to 4%. If you're over 10,000, it dropped from 12% to 10%. I'm not sure why this was done, cause from our perspective, number one on that list, it just does a little bit more to encourage somebody to pay, not pay their taxes. If we're the bank for them, and they can get a better interest rate, it's a good deal. They don't have to leverage something if they're out there on a project, project, or you're trying to get money into it. Based on our current delinquency rate, that's a $300,000 to $500,000 impact for us annually. It'll be coming our way in a couple of years as this comes down the road. So, not really good legislation that went in place, but it's one that'll have an impact on our local community for those that choose not to pay their taxes. It's good for them. With that, we'll present the numbers of the 2015 budget, and I'm gonna have Reggie come up here, and he's gonna run through where our money is in those different areas, and then I'll get into a little bit more detail with that. Reggie?
Thank you, Doug. The Unified Government's 2015 proposed budget is a $295 million budget. This budget is actually a million dollars lower than our 2014 approved budget was. On the screen here, we have sources of support, property tax, the sales tax, and the other taxes are some of our biggest, are our sources of support. Our property tax is our largest source of support at 27%. Next, our charges for services at 17%. And then also, our franchise tax, which is our BPU pilot, and also our utility payments and telephone payments from franchise taxes that are collected.
Sir, can you please speak directly into the mic?
Thank you. Also, in our, our budget, we have the expenditure side, which is showcased here. It shows the public safety budget and also the public works budget. Public safety's budget is 44% and consists of police, fire, emergency manager, and the sheriff department. The public works consists of streets department, buildings and logistics, and water pollution. Here, we, the pie charts illustrate our $136,000, $136 million city general fund. On one side, we see we have sources of support, and then the other side, we see I, we have our expenditures. Our sales tax is one of our largest pieces of sources of support, and then we also have our franchise tax, which is at 30%, which is our largest one. And then, we have our other taxes, and then we also have our charges for services. Expenditures will come in at, at $100 million for personnel, which is 74% of the pie.
Okay, Ken, just one second. We have a question for you. Commissioner Walker, can you speak directly into the microphone, please?
Would it be possible to get those two pie charts, and you show what the percentage is of 15, can you show us the increase or decrease where you say, for example, fines and fees, $4,620,000? Is that up or down? I'd like to see what they were for the previous budget year.
Yes, I can definitely provide those for you.
Thank you very much.
Our county general fund 2015 proposed budget is a $51 million budget. On one side, we have our sources of support, which you can see property tax is 62% of the pie. Property tax is the largest piece of revenue on the county side. As you can see, the county side, it does not have the diverse revenue streams that the city general fund has. On the expenditure side, we can see that personnel makes up 70%, 70% of the budget on, on that side, and also services are, make up 24% of the budget. Here, these are all the other funds that aren't included in the general, the general funds. There are 28 other funds. They tally up to $107 million, and they are 37% of the balance. The largest one here is the sewer system at $31 million, and then also we have debt service, and then also we have the emergency medical enterprise, which comes in $9.2 million. Here, this slide illustrates how a tax dollar is spent in the USD 500. As you can see, there are six different taxing entities in the USD 500 as far as UG households. You see, as far as UG tax base, there's 45% that, the tax that is paid into it. The UG has always been under 50%. Each, each city, as far as Piper, Turner, all pay, pay under 50% for each tax dollar. I'll turn it over to Doug now.
Thank you, Reginald. Reginald's our budget director, for anyone that doesn't know that, that's viewing. I think this is an important slide, really just noting that out there, that I'm sure when you run into your constituents and you talk to them, there's an assumption that the unified government is largely responsible for most of the tax bill. And as is illustrated here, we're at 45%. So, we provide all the public safety in the community, all the infrastructure, our parks, such like that, for what is 45% of every, 45 cents on every dollar that a constituent pays. As I noted at the first part, Commission had directed us to move towards structural balance of our budget. You know, where our revenues equal or exceed the expenditures. It's a difficult task when we look at it and say that our revenues have been flat for a number of years, and that we have increasing pressures coming at us from other parts, be it the legislature or whatever, where we're losing revenues. Also, moving toward budgeting, balancing this budget without doing transfers. And this is something for those of you who've been here a few years, but even those who just came in, you know, we have, we have moved money from some of our other funds in previous years. It's all things that we can do in order to balance them, but there are funds that we need to pay back, be it things in our employee healthcare accounts, our environmental trust funds, or our water pollution account. There are areas where we've moved money over, particularly in the area of our county budget, in order to balance the equation at the end of the day, so we had revenues equal to the expenditures that we were gonna expend this year. So, in doing so this year, here's the steps that I'm proposing to get us there. And you'll note on this chart, that I'll draw your first attention to where we are as far as assessed value. And here, you can see where we had a steady increase up to our peak in 2008 of, of $1.27 billion as far as evaluation across the county. We reached that peak, and then things started to drop off after the recession. We had a slight mil rate increase. So, you can see the red line is the mil rate, and you can see these two lines, where our valuation went up, we had dropped our va, or we dropped our mil rate. And it continued in that pattern. Then, we raised our mil rate a little bit to account for this holding valuation. The two lines correspond very well. That's why I use these dates as far as showing how this pattern works. As a flat valuation has been for the last five years, it's one thing to keep in mind, if our mil rate stays the same, that means our property tax dollar that we're working with stays the same. We don't have any more. Now, as the reality is, you go out and buy a gallon of gas or such like, gallon of milk, they cost more than they did five years ago. Everything cost about our operations and what it takes us to do our job has increased. But these two lines- But these two lines stay flat, that means we have no additional dollars to work with. And any other influence comes, that means we're finding efficiencies or cuts within our government operations every year in order to provide the same service that we were providing. This year, we're faced with a couple additional factors that come into play in trying to make this balance. One is, we have a radio project that's been put in place. It's a countywide radio system, it's a system we had to have. We were down to a point of having to buy parts off eBay. We needed to get this done for communication and public safety and all other segments of our government. The bills now do, it's a million dollars a year that we have to allocate to this. Don't have a lot of room within existing accounts to go to and say, well, we just have an extra million dollars. As I noted earlier, we don't have funds to transfer from and so it has to come somewhere. We have to find a way to work it within our existing budget and we're losing money for mortgage revenue fees. A half million dollars next year and that'll continue to ramp up. So what I'm proposing and mainly because the county budget is in a position where it is relying on property tax dollars and that is this flat line where there is no new money and it has really been somewhat structurally out of balance for the last couple of years, to raise the mill rate on the county side from 36.5 mills to 38.5 mills, but correspondingly drop the city mill rate from 45.5 to 43.5. This enables us to keep our overall mill rate, as requested by the commission, at 82 mills. So there's no change to the overall mill rate structure as a total for the unified government. Now, I do recognize that this does have an impact on the residents of Bonner Springs and Edwardsville because they don't see the reduction that we're doing from a city and it would be what would happen in those independent cities for them to look at their combined mill rates. But for residents of Kansas City, Kansas, it would be the same mill rate as what they have paid in previous years in order to make this happen. In doing so with the 2015 proposed budget, we can do this without any major service reductions. Really, it's operating from a reduced level from where we were previously, but we're finding ways to make that work. It is difficult, but it is things we can continue to operate. It keeps the commission neighborhood infrastructure project, program in place. Broadcasting all the commission meetings, such as presenting this budget live on UG TV tonight to all the homes around the community is there. We've been doing that all year long for the standing committee meetings and we'll be able to broadcast all of our workshops. The funding and operation that goes into that countywide radio project that I mentioned, we'll have the money for it, to pay for it to go forward. It absorbs the operating costs of our transit system and part of that is, we've expanded our bus lines, we have the new 105 route. Some people post about those on their Facebook accounts and such like that, that it's a popular thing to, to jump on and ride. But I'll also note that we've lost some federal grants and money from these areas, so it's something that we, we have to pick up. So over $300,000 went into this that is new in 2015 that we didn't pay for last year and it's not just because of the new line, that's some piece, but it's because we've lost federal funding that we now have to absorb to build this in. Our public safety operation studies that are in place, that we're working for, that you directed us to do, as well as our employee compensation study. Reorganization is also a part of the budget that many times gets worked in at this part. I'm proposing two steps to this process. Really, as your new county administrator, I have many things that I'd like to do from a reorganization, restructuring of our government and our operations, though I'm gonna propose most of that in the fall of this year. There are still some things that I'm working on and working through. I don't feel like they need to be woven into the budget. In order to do so, I am noting that I am continuing to hold some key vacancies in our government. I have a lot of vacant department heads. Just lost a recently assistant county administrator position. I'll continue to hold that position vacant and would bring back more of a comprehensive restructuring and a reorganization to the governing body this fall. However, in the interim, there are a few steps that I want to take in order to allow some of our operations to move forward more efficiently. One is the creation of the general services department. This is a department where I'll have the procurement services and our compliance, which are both small departments, report into. By taking this step now, it allows me to get managers in those positions to run those operations instead of operate in vacancy or without, so we can effectively provide those services, which on one part is all internal. Parks and recreation. I'm moving this in the budget, so it's a direct report to the county administrator's office. I think this is something that heightens the level of where we are with Parks and Rec and how they do their business and the function that operates within the government. Additionally, I'm going to move forward with the filling of the director of that position. We have left our parks director, our interim director out there hanging with, we used, where we had a director and deputies in place. We could go out, we could manage contracts, we would work on things, had the calls from people and we don't have our parks mode or such like that. There's a large part of that comes down to, these are individuals, they're field people that get out. So when we say they're a department head or such, they're people that are active, working in the streets and doing things, even though they're the director or the deputy directors. When we whittle it away to where it's 30% and that person's even classified at an interim capacity, we're not able to provide the oversight that I know you all want us to do for the money we're spending in those areas. Municipal court probation restructure. This is an area where in district court today, if you were assigned to go, if you're on probation, you report to a probation officer. In municipal court, if you get put on probation, you come back and report to the judge. We have probation officers that are there to work the function, but all the reporting is done to the judge in municipal court. This ties up court time for us. So this initiative is one to move it out of the court system. Once you're put on probation, we'll put the employees responsible into our area of probation today, where we already have that structure to work with off the district court side. They'll just be reporting there from the municipal court side. I think, one, it'll make the reporting of the people on probation work much more smooth. It'll make the jobs of probation officers easier, functioner, they'll be, they have a high workload the way it is, but they'll be able to do that and it'll free up a lot of court time in municipal court. And I say a lot, but if you go to municipal court today, you'll note, it's an extremely busy area for us and we need to find capacity to be more efficient in that area. And this is a step that staff has been working on and we're gonna move forward with this now. The next two, innovation and open data, are high priorities of this governing body and they're ones that I will say, take kind of a two-step process. Really, the reorganization steps that I'm looking at in the fall are ones that I hope to free up positions and allow people to focus from different areas, to create efficiencies in certain areas and move people or vacant positions into functional areas where we can work on innovation. Because many times I have departments that step forward and they have ideas to work on, but they can't do them because they can't focus on it. So if we have assignments of innovation or people that can work on these things, they can get it done, as well as open data. Have money in the budget to buy some equipment for open data. However, if we do it and put it in place, we still have to have somebody there that's assigned to put the information in place and then maintain it in the future. We just don't want to do it one time and then say, well, we're good, we did that. It's really something you gotta sustain and maintain forward. Next item on here is about public safety and overtime and I know you all had the presentation from our public safety departments a few months ago. This was a, this is a big deal. We, it's a high expenditure category for us. Though I will say, the target here is 30% reduction from where we were in 2013 and I am happy to report that our police and fire departments are on course to achieve this in 2014. They, they've started working this hard. They've come up with language, particularly in the police department that has put us in that direction and our fire department is achieving it in the way they're doing some schedules to get their overtime down. In 2015, plan to maintain this rate of overtime reduction at this overtime level and have met with the county sheriff and he's gonna work with us to try to find out new ways and there'll be some issues we'll have to address with the, the unions to get us there, but we believe we can make significant reductions in that area as well. The last item on this list is a, is one that a couple commissioners, McKernan and Markley, have been working on toward getting improved properties or those with structures back as valuable contributors to our community and through utilization of the land bank. And I, I put it on this list as part of, which it falls under reorganization because I think in order to make it happen, I need to have staff assigned to actually get into this. But it deals with the philosophy that we have buildings that get high tax rates built up on them, delinquent taxes, we put them in the tax sale, no one will buy them because the taxes on them have become so high and so much that they can't afford to take them out. If we put them in the land bank, we can use that tool to then get that tax structure reduced like we do with vacant properties and sell them off to somebody who would then, one, we'd get some income for the property, but more importantly, make them a viable contributor back to the community. Customer service. Already talked about UG TV and televising all communicate, all of our commission meetings. It's been an initiative we've been working on all year and we're set to continue moving that forward the year to make our, all of our meetings more available and some of the new systems we're putting in place, we'll be able to put labels, we'll put their tape replays and such like that, so we'll be able to air more of our meetings or more frequently. The fifth floor meeting room is also one that's made a great change to what we've done as far as the public coming in to view our meetings. As you all recall, when we'd have people come in, large meetings, they'd be standing around and such like that and when you're there for a couple hours, that's a very uncomfortable situation. So this room works a lot better for the public coming in as it, also I believe it does for you all in holding the meeting structure. Motor vehicle. This is an area where you had the presentation and we talked about the appointment system. Currently, it's only set if you want to come in, do your title work where you come in in person and you could schedule an appointment and then come back, a couple hours later, they'll notify you and come back in. That's worked very well for that segment of it. We will continue to expand that, so you can do it by call-in, internet and such like that to set up the appointments and then also it's at the courthouse today, we'll move it so you can also do it at the annex. The next two items on here under motor vehicle are ones that I'll say are related. I'm proposing to eliminate the fee that we placed on doing business at the annex. That's on any service customer transaction that's done at the annex. We're proposing that instead of that, we put a fee on people that want to do renewals in person at either the courthouse or the annex. And the reason for this being is that renewals are an activity that could be done by mail or over the internet today. In most communities across the state of Kansas, they experience about a 20%, 25% of their constituents use, come in person to do their renewals. In Wyandotte County, we experience over 70% that does this. This takes a lot of staff time, so when somebody comes in to do a title renewal or something they must do in person, there's a whole lot of people there doing renewals. And while we can do renewals faster, they don't have to do them in person. So I'm proposing that we move this to, but if you want to do a renewal in person, you put a five, you pay a $5 fee. The initiative here is not to raise money, that's why we're removing the annex fee, which is a point of frustration with some people, but we put it on the renewals. And that way, if you want to, you want to do it by mail or you would do it over the internet, there's no cost and hopefully we drive more people to that way, improving our customer service for those that must come into the courthouse or the annex to do their transaction. Water pollution control is also gonna be doing some public outreach in the coming months and this is some things that they're doing in regard to many of the changes we're doing through our EPA regulations, of creating a video and doing community outreach and speaking, so be able to line them up for all your public groups who'd like to have them come in and talk about our water pollution services. And then the bottom line on here is employee reviews and this is one where continually heard the commission talk about, what are we doing for customer service and that's why we have this whole page, but putting it out to each employee. As I've put reviews in place, put them back in place for employees, I put on there as a number one item, tell me what you're gonna do to improve customer service. And we have things about interaction and such like that, as smaller goals, but what each employee can do to improve customer service and that's out there now for non-union employees and we'll move this forward with all our union groups in 2015 because I don't care what your job is, there's some relation to customer service, be it internal or external customers and we can all do better and we need to talk about it. 2015 budget is one that shows the revenues have eroded and the budget is tight. However, our community really has accomplished a lot of remarkable achievements and those are some of the things that I just want to note now. You know, our population growth, 160,000, that's a, that's a notable thing for us. It's been five decades since we've achieved that. 50 years. We had moved through, population declined, it started in the 60s, continued to decline, then we stabilized in recent years and now we've moved into population growth. 50 years. It's a long time to be able to say that statement and it's something we need to take a lot of pride in, in the direction you all have taken this community. New job growth. 355 counties are looked at in this survey. We ranked 46th, double what the national average was as terms of percentage of new job growth. We still have challenges in this area because I look at it that, how do we get those new jobs to our own citizens? But we are creating a lot of jobs and a lot of good jobs here in Wyandotte County. Crime is at an all-time low. New grocery stores continue to come in, it's been one where we've seen marked achievements coming on. We have the Price Chopper at 78th and State that's come on, that's really doubled its size and pictured in this one is the new grocery store down in Argentine, which was really considered a food desert area and now has a grocery store in it. We've seen over a billion dollars in economic development investment last year. You know, our, our star area in that is Fairfax. That's our bread and butter for machinery and, or from industrial, such like that, manufacturing. It's continuing to grow and we've seen the central industrial district come on and the deal you just recently improved regarding our own public levy, which would have been a half million dollar liability in this year's budget, but instead, we've turned it over to a private sector company that's now going to create state-of-the-art manufacturing facility on the place, the most in Kansas City, Kansas of state-of-the-art and then over 300 new jobs are likely to come into there. Village West area continues to pop, bring in new development to be around that area. In Rosedale with 39th and Rainbow around KU is a growing area with the increased investment and a lot of potential for us to move for. Noted the one grocery store that's open, but in Argentine area, we also have the new neighborhood Walmart that's coming in and surrounding retail that'll be around that. An urban revitalization, we're seeing investment come into our downtown, it's pictured over here in Minnesota Avenue with Loretto Properties, that's gonna spend over a million dollars in our downtown. We have the new healthy campus that's proposed in this area, as well as projects like St. Margaret's that came in and took, revitalized a building that could be in our future demo program, but instead now is a viable contributor to our community and providing a service to our senior population. Infrastructure improvements, notably on that is like State Avenue running across our entire city, great improvement for our community. The new bus routes that I already mentioned, great action, great change to move our citizens around. Upscale apartments, this is another one that's decades old and coming to, coming to life for us and we see a couple of new projects out west, one being out at 135th and State and then the Village West apartments by, by the Village West area, which just yesterday announced their second phase because their first phase has had record rates as far as lease-ups coming into it for a luxury scale apartment. They're gonna build a duplicate second phase as good or better with better amenities than they did in the first phase. And then the CNAP projects. These are notable things that all of you should take a lot of credit for, you've done great things with this. I know we have a new opening of a football field this weekend at 9th and Parallel and there are other curb and sidewalk programs and such that we've done in the community. These are valuable items and we're gonna see more of those come as you move forward. So we are seeing a lot of positive trends in our community, even though the money's tight. We're able to make it work and we're able to be efficient in the way we're operating our government. With that, I'll go back to the calendar and note, you all have done a lot of work to get us to this point. We have the month of July set forth ahead of us where we start meeting tonight. After the commission meeting, we'll stay here in the chambers and talk about a couple of topics and then move on to every Monday and Thursday for the rest of the month to, to work through those if we deem it's necessary. Though I'll note, you've already invested a lot of time, so you know, maybe you won't need all that. I will note that the budget will be posted online today as we conclude this meeting, so it'll be on our website and available. We have all of your budget books, they're here in the chambers. We have all of your budget books there here in the chambers, if you would like to get it now, otherwise, staff will take them up, put them in your office, so they're up there for you and available. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my budget presentation.
It's terrific, thank you. I wanna say thanks to our team. We have a lot of folks in this room who've worked diligently on this budget, and I would just ask that all those folks in the budget and finance office who are here, if you could just stand so we can thank you for your weeks and months of work. Can you all stand and just give them a hand? Come on. They're too tired to stand, exactly. Well, we really appreciate your effort. We appreciate everyone coming out tonight for this presentation. As Mr. Bach mentioned, we do have a 7 o'clock meeting, which will, we anticipate will be a brief meeting, and after that, we will have a 7:30 beginning budget workshop, which we anticipate will be a short workshop. We're gonna do more, spend more time kind of laying the groundwork and making sure we have the topics lined up, and then we will be ready next Monday to dive in. That will give us all the weekend. Our homework this weekend is to read through the three-inch binder and become aware of it, but we really appreciate everyone's work, and I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I feel more confident coming into this budget in terms of the preparation we've done for the last several months, so I think the commission has done a great job in preparation. So we are, this meeting is now adjourned, and we will be back here at 7 o'clock for our commission meeting. Thank you.